Governor Randall, I'm town supervisor. They got most of our councilmen here tonight. We got Howard Nillan, Reggie Faico, and Vern Bruno back there. Our county clerk. Ms. RJ, he's from La Berge. He's the one that we've contracted, his company, to do all the engineering. They have been working hand in hand with me for over two and a half years on this project alone, just getting the grants through and applying for the grants and getting the ball going. There's so much to it, it was almost overwhelming at times. The project right now is coming in at about 8.1 million. And I want to take all his thunder, but he's got a nice power point that he's going to show you. Been applying for grants. We ended up with a CDVG grant for 1.25 million. We ended up with a USD ARD grant for 1.3 million. That's based on our income study. We got lucky enough that both those grants are for middle to low income. We had to stay under a threshold of 56,000 per home, for each individual house. So they take an average. So we hired Liz Tedford to go around. She sent out all those letters. I don't know if you remember those or not, and was kind of intrusive in your lights to ask what you made, okay, for a year, what your annual salary was. But we needed that to end up going to be able to apply for the grants that we're applying for right now because they're moderate to low income grants. So the threshold at the time was 56,000 some odd dollars was the cutoff. And we made it by 54,000 something. Now, that's not great for the town or the district, but it really did help us with the grants, all right? And what I think it was, what, 50, well, 50% we had to have back? If I remember right, for the income survey in order for the state?
Oh, it was like, no, it was like for 75, 80%.
All right, so we, you guys did well at sending them back because without that, we wouldn't even got this far with this project. We're still working on the grants, all right? I haven't gave them. I've been on this, like I said, two and a half years since I got in. And it really has turned my hair gray on the sides, working on this. We didn't get the WEA grant this year. Peru got part of the WEA grant, the city got part of the WEA grant, Beat McTellum got part of the WEA grant, I think Dana Morrow was the other one up here that got it. Doesn't mean that we can't reapply. One of the bigger things that I found out after that we hadn't had accomplished yet was ERR, which is like the environmental study. And what they want when they give you that money is they want to make sure that your project is shovel ready, is ready to go. Being that we didn't have that ERR that kind of hurt us when we applied for the WEA. If I'm not too far off, I think it's going to be about $20,000 to do the ERR, okay? That's environmental study to make this more shovel ready. But before I throw the check for $20,000 by you guys, I just wanted to make sure that we could explain what the project is, where we are after two and a half years, what we got for grants, and what we're going after. I got some good news about a month and a half ago from Elise Saphonics' office. I've been working with Carmen over there. Elise called me two weeks ago and talked to me on the phone, can I do anything else for you? It's election year, it's a good year to try to move the project forward, all right? Nothing's guaranteed. That's congressional funding. Could be, you know, from a million dollars to maybe two and a half, I don't know, you know? And we made it through the first round out of all the other towns in New York State. You know, we made it through. The other thing that just, I got some good news on was Chuck Schumer and Jill O'Grant also picked us up, and we made it through their first round. So they're looking at, I think it was 2,560,000, somewhere there about, of funding. Again, that has to go through the Ways and Means Committee, and then it has to be voted on in the Senate because all federal money. But I'm pretty optimistic that we got three pretty good politicians that have picked it up on their congressional funding. And I think it's only six or seven, maybe eight, that they get to pick out of each one, if I remember right. So for them to pick up our project, that says a lot. That says a lot. We're to the point where the CDVG grant, the bond, and the USD ARD grant have a 24-month viability. So we got those, the bond and the grants from both of those entities approved in January. So here we are, six months into that 24-month window. And I didn't want to lose what we already have in grant money, which is 2.5 million dollars, all right? If we go over that 24 months, we're going to lose it. If we don't at least start the project and get it going, we'll never get an extension. Now, when I talked to Ben Madison at CDVG, Donna can tell you, I call him on the phone and they just get hold because I need to know. You know, when I first talked to him, he's like, we were pretty much sticklers on the 24-month period. If it's not completed, you're not going to get that money. When I talked to him last week at the office, and I talked to him this week actually, or no, it was last week, where Donna, after I got done, I asked him, I said, hey, with everything going on right now, you know, materials are really hard to get. There's a lot of infrastructure projects going on throughout the whole United States with, you know, the infrastructure bill coming up. That's another one that we're going to apply for is the infrastructure bill. And we don't know what's going to go there. I talked to Elise about that, and she goes, the only reason I voted against it was because we didn't have any control over it. It goes back to the states, and then the state government decides who gets whatever money out of those funds. My worry that they were going to put it all, and hers also, was in the bigger cities that have a lot bigger population, that it's easier for them to do projects and keep the costs down because there's so many people. And I didn't want to, you know, I said, I think some of it should be spent in rural New York State where, you know, where there's a lot less of us to bite off an 8.1 million dollar project than there is, you know, in New York City or Rochester, or I think it's all but, but there is a lot bigger metropolises. But that's where we are. We have, we're going to keep moving forward. I'd like to anyways, if everybody's good with it. I'd like to keep moving forward on a parallel path. That means moving forward with bids by this fall on the contracts to see what they come in at, and also move forward on that parallel path of trying to get the rest of the grants. And none of them are guaranteed. Everything that we'll show you tonight, just like I told you, we have this guaranteed, all right? That's why I wanted to bring you up to speed of where we are right now. But I can't guarantee you on the rest of the grants. I can just tell you that. We got some pretty good names pulling for us for the extra funds. But nothing's a guarantee. You know how that works in politics. So, you know, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks for listening to Now Much Less, I'll be very short.
No, after, you want to, two and a half years, most of us in there.
Hey, Kevin, want to go hit that mic too?
Yeah.
So, good evening, everybody. Again, my name's Ron La Berge, I'm with La Berge Group. We're basically a municipal engineering firm that works throughout eastern New York. Did I say it okay?
No.
No? I thought Jamie was making a joke over there.
I said, Ron, maybe you're right.
Sorry. So anyway, so town has hired us to look at this water system and determine basically to how to upgrade it, what's the best thing to do, basically, and come up with the cost to do that. So we started that, like Kevin said, golly, yeah, at least two years ago, I think, at this point. So basically, the purpose of the meeting tonight is just kind of go over, you know, what are the proposed improvements? You know, what are the costs to the customers, you know, you folks? And answer any questions you can, give whatever feedback you'd like to the town board, you know, the members are here, need to hear from you. So I have a relatively short presentation, so I'd rather do questions at the end because some may get answered during it. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, obviously, afterwards. So basically, let's see, do this right way. This is, most of this system was installed in 86, as far as we can find in all the records. It was all transite pipe at the time, it was a great new material. A transite pipe is asbestos cement, and that has some challenges with it in terms of handling it for repairs, disposal, et cetera. You know, it's obviously not allowed to be used anymore for obvious reasons. It's not a health issue. It's more of a handling and short lifespan issue, you know? Asbestos cement pipe, as I know, theirs has a, basically, a 50 to 75-year life expectancy depending upon the material it's buried in. So basically, the system is approaching life expectancy at this point. The, you know, the water main breaks have been a concern. Shallow barrier of pipes has been a concern. River Street is the notorious one where we have shallow water mainly run the water during the winter, winter days to keep it from freezing, which of course costs money. One of the things that we couldn't figure out, and nobody else had been able to figure out, is where the eight-inch transmission line that comes down from the tank comes to the Route 22B water main, that comes down here into the Hamline. Again, that's transite, very hard to find. I know the town had pipe locators out there trying to find it, and to no avail. So the system itself, let's see here, page, so this is the basic water system. So the red line you see up there, that's just the district boundary. So that, any properties within that red line are within the water district. The blue line is, it represents eight-inch pipe, so I'm just going to come over here. Just drawing everything out, you probably know it anyway, but you know, this is Route 22B that comes down through here, here's Mason Street, this is Flat Rock Road, and your water storage tank is over here. Right now, you have this line that comes down, so eight-inch line into the Hamline proper. And the only other eight-inch line is actually newer, is ducted iron, is up in this neighborhood. So that's there. All the yellow represents six-inch pipe, and you have a little piece of four-inch pipe in here for some reason, it's just never gotten placed. So that's the basic existing system that basically works on gravity. So what we're proposing to do is basically, I say it's fairly simple, but fairly straightforward, maybe is a better term, is replace the eight-inch transmission line and Route 22B line with ducted iron, or could be PVC pipe, just that material has not been selected yet. This is still preliminary point this project. But that's about 12,000 feet. Replace the remaining eight-inch pipe except for, as I mentioned before, about 10,000 feet. So that's almost all the water line in the system. Along with that, you have, you know, that includes what new water services from the new main to the property line, new curb stops, connection to the existing water service at your property. It doesn't, it does not include, just to be clear, from the new curb stop at your property line into the house. So no work on private property, but everything within the street would be, would be there. There's new hydrants, adjusted hydrant spacing, just, you know, will work with the town fire department on those. And then there's restoration, which is a good chunk of the cost of this project. Sidewalks are a big issue, you know, we're going to be disturbing quite a bit of those. Trees and shrub replacements, driveway repairs, obviously, we're going to be cutting across driveways, so they need to be fixed. Road surfaces will have to be replaced, you know, lawn areas restored. There's a whole myriad of those types of issues. So not just the water line, all those costs that go into the number I'm going to present to you. And so, but there's more information. There is a engineering report on file here at the town hall, if anybody wants to look at it, it's here, if you want to go through all the particulars of those. And so this, this is the new system, or the proposed system, I should say. And again, this just kind of follows what I just discussed. So again, here's the water storage tank. We're going to make a change in path. So instead of, like you recall, the transmission line I mentioned comes, like came down this way, we're going to cut over to Flat Rock Road and bring it down Flat Rock Road because it's more accessible, you know, easier to get, easier to maintain. We could provide some future benefits to customers outside the district if the district's ever extended. These people are not, these people are not going to be serviced. So if outside the district is red line, only people within the red line are going to receive service from us. Toilet is lined down 22B, replaces the eight-inch line, that's good for increased fire flow. This area here pretty much stays as it's because it's the newer pipe that's got PVC and the ducted iron, so these mains are going to be replaced. All this here is blue, that's going to be a long new eight-inch pipe. And of course, again, with the hydrants, you know, valves, everything else that goes along with it. So the majority of the work is here and down through here. Kind of the center area is pretty much going to be left alone.
River Street will be picked up right out the back, because that's why I'm sorry, I might jump in here a little bit.
No, it's River Street. I'd be disappointed if you do.
All right, so River Street will be part of the first phase. And you'll also have the main line coming from the water tank all the way down to the bridge. One of the biggest problems we have with this system is that we hooked in a town of Flatbent a few years ago, which inverted the system, okay? It used to be all gravity feed, right? It's a gravity feed system, it was made to be a gravity feed system. Only thing is, there's over 1,400 feet elevation difference between where our tank is up on Sober and the bridge right down here in the village. So now, where the 1,400 feet elevation, and he's the engineer, but just to help us get the water and the water, maintain the water pressure back into the village and service everybody in between, now that we've inverted it, we're trying to push water from the bridge back up the other way, up 1,400 feet. I've talked to Scott Stutter at the town of Flatbent Water Sewer, does our OMM contracts and pretty much maintains the system whenever we have an issue. When they were working on, I call it the egg beater, but basically what they did was they put a mixer up in the old tank, Sober Street, and that keeps the water mixed so it doesn't get stale up there. Because back when we had our own wells, the well, water came out of the wells, went into the tank, and then emptied out of the tank and went in through the system. So it constantly had fresh water in it. Now it's working the other way, we're trying to push water up into that tank. And I know at times, he said, when they were working on that, that there was maybe 10 feet of water in that tank. Now, I'm sure it recouped overnight and it came up. I know it's not come to the top of the tank, which is another issue because this was never meant to be a pressure right system to that extent, right? It was gravity feed. So, you know, we got a few things that we're working on. That area up there where he said we're pretty much leaving it alone, well, everybody knows that is hilltop of states, right? That's a pretty new development. That's all newer PVC line, high-pressure PVC line up there. There's no sense of messing with that because it's relatively new and it's got a pretty good lifespan left. The other areas around here don't. When we, when it's talking about River Street again, that, if we don't let that run at the bottom of the blow-off all winter long, we're going to freeze it. Anybody that's lived over by River Street or knows that area well, we had a few good years before we had this great big ice dam and the flooding down there, and then we lost, you know, all the home, the majority of the homes that used to be down there. When we had all those homes down there, they were pulling individually off of River Street, keeping enough water flow through that that it wouldn't freeze up. Now we're back to four or five homes at the end of the road. We were right back into where we were back in, you know, 60s and 70s kind of issue before that big development went in down there. So that's another issue. The fire suppression, like you said, you all know, I've been in the fire department 38 years. I can tell you right now, if I was to go fill out 261, that 2,000 gallon tanker out there, it's going to take a half hour to fill it up. A half an hour, okay? When we're fighting a structure fire, that's no good. And it only got worse when they redid the bridge down there. And I'm still fighting with Binghamton to find out how they reconnected that in. And I don't believe it was reconnected in even to the main, the way it was before. I think it's still diverted down Mason Street around Maple and comes back the other way. We have many pressure issues. We have issues with breakage, you know what I'm saying? It's just, the system has gotten to its lifespan or passed it. The fire hydrants over 600 feet, that's going to help you on your, your fire insurance, all right? Because if you've got a hydrant right outside your house or within an eighth or quarter mile of your house, they look at that when you do your ISO. When you do your ISO, when ISO comes in and does your ISO audit down here, I added up to five wide the last time, back when I was chief, and we've maintained that ever since. At one time, it was a 10, okay? 10 is zero fire suppression, all right? 1 is the best that you can ever get. But in order to do that, you have to have at least a backup pumper sitting here, and we're never going to build up forward to do that. And when I, when I, I kind of joked with a guy and I said, well, we got that 1929 Sanford out there, that's our backup. Basically, he goes, no, doesn't work that way, right? But to get that rating up, okay, there's a lot of things that you got to do, but this will help not only, again, the system, but it will help on other areas too, you know? Like RJ was saying, you know, we're going to, the curb stops, the sidewalks, a lot of them are going to be replaced, a lot of them are going to need to be replaced, especially along 22B because it's too expensive to rip up a state road and put that water line down through it. We, you know, we try not to put them anywhere where we're going to disturb anything or rip it up after, but unfortunately, we only got so much room to work with between houses and the road. And everything's pretty tight, you know, that even in the Hamline down here. So the best thing that we came up with, well, we'll put them under the sidewalk. If we have to repair something there, hopefully, we don't have to take out more than a couple of those sections and do what you got to do. But it was still more cost-effective than it would be to, again, put it underneath the roads and have to dig the roads up. So there's a lot here. There's a ton that we've been working on for a couple of years. And before I get myself in trouble because I named a couple of politicians, Billy Jones has been very instrumental with helping, he's willing to help too, and Dan Stack, Senator Stack, has also been involved. So before I leave anybody out, get my butt in trouble, I mentioned their names still, okay? I'll jump in again if I see.
Oh, I know you're, that's fine, that's fine. You are the supervisor. So anyway, I mean, so basically, as I mentioned, we're replacing just about all the mains except for, you know, the newer ones that are not transite. So Kevin kind of touched base on some of these things, but obviously, you know, new mains, you know, less leakage, less breakage, there is some system leakage, which, you know, most of which probably be eliminated. You know, more, we can move a lot more water through the 12-inch line, as Kevin alluded to, in either direction for that matter. Useful life of the system, obviously, would expand over 100 years. And of course, we eliminate that special need of handling and disposal for the asbestos cement pipe. So everybody's been talking about 1.8 million dollars, and there is what constitutes a 1.8 million dollars?
8.1.
8.1, sorry, that's what I said, I'm sorry.
I wish it was 1.8.
Jeez. Better not drive today. So anyway, so as you can see, the estimated construction is actually, I'm going to call it 5.8 million dollars, and then, you know, based on preliminary takeoff, using, you know, updated construction figures, which update daily, I think as Jamie can attest to. And we're carrying a large contingency on this, 27%.
Basically, for inflation, even though I almost lost my bond because of that word because Biden didn't want to end the final paperwork, and I had 44 hours to get the USD ARD locked in at 1.7% for 38 years, and the 1.3 million dollar bond, they sent it back, and then I had to hammer these guys to do the, to put that under contingency because it was written in the preliminary paperwork, or the final actually, at that point, as inflation. And he's getting pounded so hard right now with inflation that they didn't want to see that word in there. So basically, we have a fallback of, you know, that million 541,000.
And just so everybody understands, typically, we would use 15% for that figure. Now, last year, actually, state agencies started telling us, use 30% in your, in your projects because construction pricing is unstable, let's call it that at best. Now, obviously, there's some geotechnical, heavy soil boring, some legal administrative items, surveying and mapping of the area, the environmental work, Kevin alluded to that. There's the ERR, which is the Environmental Review Record. Part of that includes cultural resources, and we're not really sure where the line is going to go yet. Once we know that, then we send it to the state's sort of preservation office, they tell us, okay, we're fine where it is, or we need you to do additional studies. So that's some of that, some of that money is in that 25,000 dollar figure.
At the local level, Barb's been really good. She did a whole bunch of local historian studying, she didn't see anything that, you know, like native burial sites or anything like that that could be a problem, but we won't know until we go through that process.
Where they're called archaeological sensitive areas in certain parts of the district. So those things need to get like that. Engineering costs, construction observation costs, and some miscellaneous costs, which I think I use that to make a balance out, actually.
Yeah, that was the two lines we had to switch up for the.
Right, right.
Inflation.
So, right, so anyway, so that's the general breakdown. Again, in the engineering part, there's a lot more detail in there if you want to go look at it in terms of what's included in the construction, you know, sidewalk, okay, admiring, et cetera, et cetera. So project funding, and this is what Kevin was talking about. So right now, the town has in hand a CDVG grant of 1.25 million dollars. Basically, as Kevin said, that has to be used within 24 months. So we're already six months into that.
Correct.
USDA grant of a million three, and then the remainder is the USDA RD log, which is 38 years at 1.75%. Kevin managed to get that in just under the wire because it went up to, what Dave said, went up to 2.3%.
Yeah, they said, probably within the next three months, it's going to be looking at four and a quarter or higher.
So you're fortunate to get that, that ready locked in.
Yep, now, one little word almost stopped us from getting that locked in.
Right, yeah, right. So, so the big question is, what, what does this mean to, you know, we're coming right down to the ratepayer, right, I mean, everybody here. So current user costs. Now, this is a typical single-family home. Operation maintenance is 144 dollars a year, and your water use charge roughly 210, and that's based on 80,000 gallons a year, which is kind of a normal, single-family type number that we always use. So, and right now, I know that this is not, there's some, based on assessed value or things like that.
We use the IVE alarm rate, which is a part of your assessed value, I think it's 1.0, don't quote me, but like 1.6, 1.7% of your assessed, with the IVE alarm rate on whatever your house is worth. And then we've been using quarterly rates. You pay 65 dollars a quarter right now, it's every three months, you pay 65 bucks, that's 260 dollars a year. If you're, you know, a family of one, and we have quite a few in the village that are like that, then they're still paying 65 dollars every three months whether they're using 18 dollars with the water or not. The one big plus would be is, I mean, a typical would be a family of probably, what, four?
No, I think you average, you have like 3.2 or something.
Roughly four, or thereabouts. So everybody's actually paying a little bit more than what that average is. Because when Donna and I looked at Macy Lane, the average was about 47 dollars in their meter, okay? They actually only pay for whatever goes through their meter at their house. You guys are paying a flat rate at 65 dollars a quarter, okay? Some of that is due to the fact that, like Ron was talking about, you know, we got that water line that goes through the middle of the field up there, and there's a pond there that never used to be there. And I don't know how many of you know Don or Abadu, and God bless him, he just passed a little while ago, but I have Don up there, he was trying to find the water line, they can't even find it because there's four and a half feet of water in a pond up there that never was there before. So I don't know how many, that's what his inkling was, is that we're probably creating that pond with the main line, you know what I mean? Because that, it's right over the top of. Because that, it's right over the top of it.
Where is the pond?
So if you go up in the field, between the tank and Sulper and 22B, there's a belly there that is filled all in with water, that's right where the right of way.
Yeah, I know, I know where it is. I don't know where it is.
Yeah, he went up there, I don't, Mike Gagnon went with him, but they took a flat John boat and they tried to find it, and they tried rods, and they can't, they don't know where it is.
Part of a Beamer pond.
Yeah, so, like I said, it's not accessible, it's not really easy to work on, and if we had to, if we had to do any work up there, it's going to be really expensive because it's out in the middle of that field. So by putting that line over to flat rock road, bringing it down, it does two things. It makes it easily accessible for maintenance, we're going to pick up some fire hydrant protection maybe there, and I've been busting on around a lot to try to see how far up the road we could pick up users on a flat rock road, okay? Again, he pulls out his engineering pen there and tells me about where we can get away with hooking houses in on a flat rock road and stay above, I think it's 20 pounds, right?
Well, absolutely minimum is 35 pounds in the street, 20 when under fire conditions, so 35 is pretty low.
Yeah, and about on, for the resident?
That's the absolute minimum we'll add by state, 35, normal water pressure.
You know, we're going to be able to pick up some of the lower end of flat rock road. We're not going to pick up anything, a password, that, if we went back to that map, where that line comes diagonally across the field into the flat rock road. To do that, there's a couple of ways that we can do it, even if we're under that pressure, but that would be on homeowner. They can put a pressure pump in that also requires permitting. Talking to Ryan Davies down at Clint County Health Department, he goes, "Yep," he goes, "You shouldn't have any problems there." But they do have to have permitting by the Clint County Health Department to put the pressure pump in. But that could pick up a couple of houses up farther, you know, closer to that line cutting across that we wouldn't be able to normally do. One of the other things, in the water district, your water district, Marshall Water District, we got roughly about $300,000 in there, okay? A little more than that. I'm hesitant to take any of that money out of there, all right, of your money, and put it in the system right now. Because basically, $300,000 into there is not going to change those end numbers enough to even worry about. And you're bonding it at 1.75%, so you're never going to get it any cheaper than that. What I'd like to do with that, and what I've been working on, I'm telling my guests, and I'm thinking ahead, but I'd like to use that money to upgrade the water tank up on Sulper Street, which we can, there again, maybe hopefully increase some pressures by maybe going up with it, or upgrading that water tank, putting it higher, or, that's a ban tank, I'm not sure how many more bans we can put on it to add more pressure, but there again, we're back to elevations, and we would probably require a pump up there to pump that water and get it back up to where it really used to be, and/or make it more viable. There's, the four phases of this project was actually, which we cut back on, was actually looping Bradwell Road in and picking up all the houses on Bradwell Road across. That's another big no-no with any water system, is a deadhead system that doesn't loop back in, so you can't pull off of both directions, especially with fire flow and things of that nature, but it also increases your pressures automatically, and it helps the water volume because you can pull from either side. Eventually, if we got this done, it would be nice to loop that back through Bradwell in the future and have that whole system looped, which. It's actually exponentially, once you start looping that, right, as far as, you know, what you're getting off of the volume and the water pressure. The other thing that I got to look at, and I asked Ron about, was to check Hilltop Estates because if it falls short from coming over to Mason Street, we could actually loop the system there with probably, I don't know, I'm going to guess offhand, maybe 200, 300 feet more pipe. Because that comes in on 22B side, and by Leander on the other side, I don't think it connects then. But now that they've got the new line up from the Town Hall up to Buckley Estates, we may be able to tie into that and try to loop that system if it's not across there, which will help overall a lot. But there's, it's a chess match, it's all, you know, one move at a time, and we're getting there, that's all I can tell you, but we're to the point where I need to know whether everybody wants to keep going forward with it because we're to that point where I can't wait and lose, I don't want, I don't want you guys to lose $2.5 million in grants and, you know, like I say, $5 million in a 1.7 bond.
Possibly more.
And there is possibly more grants, like I say, even infrastructure's in play. I talked to Dan Stack about that, Billy Jones, when I seen him up at KDO Field Day, he goes, "What can I do for you?" Selection year, you know, it's a good year. It's also a good time because at the federal level, everything is infrastructure right now, and it's water and sewer. We just had a meeting on sewer infrastructure. I don't want to get into that because I could spend another four hours on that, but I'm looking at a sewer line for Casellas right straight down to the city. So we had a little meeting with Ringfuss and Mike Cashman and that, and Casella. If we can get Casella to kind of nail down that they're willing to do this X amount of it, there's benefits to them too in that, because they'd be going from an industrial line to a residential, which is cheaper, believe it or not, even though it's a bigger line, because it's more common. So there's some things on the horizon, but, I'll try to get through this one first.
I've got two slides left.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so anyway, we didn't, so the additional cost due to this project really doesn't affect operation maintenance, it doesn't affect water use, it puts, basically, you're taking out a loan, and there's annual debt service associated with that loan. And so we estimate that the cost per, this sort of single-family home, which is what we call an equivalent dwelling unit in our engineering reports now, is $575 a year, and that's based on the 1.75% loan. It's a 38-year loan to USDA, so that helps lower that annual amount. So in combination, the system is going to cost a typical home about $930, $929 is what the cost would be. And as Kevin was talking about, whoops, I went the wrong way, excuse me. So additional potential funding. NIAWIA stands for New York Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, that's a grant program, and the town can get up to $3 million. They pay up to 60% of the project cost, but no more than $3 million. And since you're taking a loan of $5 million, some odd dollars, you would be eligible for the whole $3 million. Then the State Tribal Assistance Grant is really the congressional earmark fund, if you want to call it, that's what they used to call it, earmarks. And there's an application for that, $2,562,000. Don't ask me how that number got generated to 3,000, 2,000. Yeah, right. And as Kevin said, you know, it has a lot of support. And the way that works is, that's a budget item, so we'll find out in October, probably November, really, whether it's in the budget, and then, once it's in the budget, how they move it out to, I'm not sure exactly how they move that out to the town, because it's a program they're going to put it through.
Yeah, I talked to Jonathan Carmichael, he goes, "It would be probably sometime in 2023." One of the things that we've got to watch is, if we complete a project, if we complete the project, we're not going to be able to get any more funding. But as long as, even if the project has started and it's not complete, we're still eligible for funding, okay? So that's where we're in that muddy water right now, where I can't wait, we can't wait any longer if we want to keep the funding that we have. Now, if we want to keep the 2.5 million worth of free money and the five, over $5 million USDA RD bond, we got to get moving and we got to start working on getting, like you were saying, the ERR done and all the other stuff, and putting out some bids and see what they come in for. Without getting too technical with it, when I talked to Lucas Manning at USDA RD, he goes, you know, there's, there's still, we could re-underwrite it, he goes, "It doesn't happen a lot," but he goes, "If this project come in significantly higher," he goes, "We may put a little bit more than 1.3 million on top of it from the USDA RD." Because basically, how they figure that out is they go, they take your, the moderate income that we had, or the mean income that we had, that was around $54,000, and they expect that the homeowner should be able to pay between 1.75 or 1.8% of their income. So that's how they based that, that they were going to give us 1.3 million. But he goes, "That's also based on what the cost of the project is." So what USDA RD does is they throw money on top to get it down to that 1.7 to the end user, no more than 1.7 of their income.
Excellent, so just to add to that a little bit.
Or eight, excuse me.
So the way these programs work, particularly USDA, if the town is fortunate enough to, say, get the NIAWIA grant of $3 million, which the application for that goes in later this year, has not yet been announced. The, there will only that, the town, right? Was it 1.7 million? Because USDA has this figure they want everybody to pay, and they use that grant money they're giving you to get you there. But so if you get grant money from somebody else, they take theirs away. You keep the loan all you want, but that's the way they worked that. It's still a net positive to the town, to the district, but just so you're aware, these aren't necessarily completely additive.
Well, they would be cumulative after you exceed that 1.3 million that they were going to put up on top.
Correct.
So if we got the, like you said, to make it simple, if we got the $3 million NIAWIA grant, they would pull back to 1.3, we'd have 1.7 gain. But then if you pick up, you know, and they're all ifs, but I mean, and then if we pick up the congressional funding, that 2.562 would go right on top of it. If we got anything out of the infrastructure bill, that would go on top. The only money that you're ever going to lose is the 1.3 from USDA RD, because like I say, they want, they figured it out at 1.8% of that $54,000 mean income for our water district. Did I lose you on that?
I don't know, maybe we should have gone to.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's taken me two and a half years to get.
Well, that's why, well, that's why we're presenting the project at the numbers we know.
If we didn't get any more funding at all, this is exactly.
That's correct, that's correct. So anyway, I mean, that's all. Other than, thank you, with questions, Kevin, I don't know if you want me to cover anything else. If you have to answer any questions, Gordon would probably like your comments, if you have any on the project.
Oh, turn the lights on, so we can see everybody's face.
Oh, I will, Kevin, I will talk a little about schedule.
Yep.
So we're a little bit later than we thought we were going to be.
Right.
So schedule-wise, assuming the town moves forward, you know, we'd be looking at probably bidding in the spring at this point, almost, by the time we get all our regulatory approval.
The spring of 2023?
Yes, spring of 2023, I'm sorry. Because we might just be too aggressive if we get it done this fall at this point. Yeah, I guess if we can, we would, but I mean, I think realistically, we're in there in construction during next year, which would be great to start because you didn't use your CDBT money and everything else. So completion would be in 2024, I would imagine. Yeah, unless you get a good contractor, I don't think there's any good contractors in the room. So anyway, any questions?
I have a question, and it's probably obvious, but that 929 is the, hold on, if you get more money in grants, will that lower the loan that you're going to take?
So for the 575.
Yeah, but if you get more money in grants, you're, that loan that you get for 1.78 will be less, right?
Correct, that's correct.
So the 575 could be less.
That's correct. So basically, it's going to go down by roughly, for every million dollars you get in addition in grant, it goes down roughly 20, roughly 20%. I can't do the math, that quick. But correct.
That's on our books.
No, so you're correct. Just, this gentleman.
When the line was down 22B, is it going to be on the east side or the west side?
We don't know the answer to that question yet, and the reason for that is we don't have any detailed survey.
Prelimarily, though, it's going down the same side it is right now, but a lot of it, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, we can't say for sure, I would not want to say for sure. We can't put it right next to the old one because, you know, it's going to happen there, and we don't know how much room we have left in the right of way, so we have to make sure and things like that.
So if you go on the opposite side of the road, all those houses have to be tapped under 22B?
Yep, new services would be installed under 22B to the other side, correct.
To the owner's expense?
No, no, only your lateral line.
Back in the day, when I had property that I sold on one side of the street or gave it to my daughter, I had to pay for the tap to go under 22B to give her water.
So that was, I'm going to assume that was well after the system was in place, so this is replacing everything?
This was just a few years back.
No, if you have a, if there was a new house, or, I would think that probably would be your cost. But this project is going to replace services if it's under the road, and it's going to connect to an existing service. So, you know, if you, right, so there's no cost to the homeowner for getting the water line reconnected to the water main, number one to it.
Look, your question is, we just had one on River Street that we did that with, and they had to, we cut trench the road, I wouldn't do that in 22B, it cost them a lot, right? But we did that because it was our road, okay? And we ran the collar on, because the water was on the other side. So we put the collar in on that side, they were responsible to run the lateral all the way over, and they had to pay for, I think it was, don't quote me, about two grand, I think, for the whole water installation, okay? But that was because we weren't doing anything with the water main, all right? When we're doing it with the water main, we're replacing water mains, we expect that we have to reconnect everybody in, okay? So as long as we're only connecting in at the street stop, okay, so whatever your pre-existing line is, from my understanding, there will be no inspection fee or there will be no connection fee as long as it's done at the time the water line's going in.
Right, I understand.
If they go by your house and they're a mile and a half down the road, and all of a sudden, you sell that same piece of property and they have to redo it, then it would be just like it would be today. But at the time, the lateral from the street shut off to your home is your property, so I can't spend taxpayers' dollars on your property. If you want to replace your lateral line, because it's 50 years old, I would suggest that's the time to do it while we're connecting it in for free and doing an inspection for free. But that would be on homeowner. But any existing line that's there, we will put a collar and reconnect it in or get it across the road if it ends up being on the other side as part of the project.
Okay.
What will it do to the pressure? Will it change the pressure?
It actually won't change your pressure very much, no, no. What it will do, it'll take away, you know, as Kevin was talking about, feed from the tank and do with the larger main size, we're going to bounce that a little bit better, but it's not going to change the pressure in the system.
When the town first came, when the town placenter first came, I'm the last house on 22B.
Okay.
Okay, I could have turned my faucet on, I had no pressure, I mean, it just dribbled out, and I complained and complained and complained, and then I think I went to sell you at the town park. And I went over there and all you have to be, they told me, "We only have to give you 10 pounds of pressure." What's 10 pounds of pressure? I mean, fill up a coffee pot, 10 pounds?
Well, no, no, that's, I don't know who told you that. I mean, we do a lot of work with Design of Blasberg.
No, it's you, but as a town of Blasberg employees, they get, and pressure tested and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, minimum pressure at the main, the main is 35, is required typically, it's supposed to be 35 mm, all right, that's the minimum.
But because at the main, that's not.
At the main, that's correct, at the main, working pressure, normal pressure, right? You know, under fire flow conditions, they can drop to 20, but that's not typical, right? So it should be, right, so 35 at the main, of course, then it depends on whether you're uphill or down, you know, where you are from the main, right? So that comes into play too.
We were tossed around. We even tossed around a pump at the bottom of Flat Rock Road.
Right.
What are you looking at, like, about 250,000?
Yeah, about that, another 250,000.
So, I mean, the good thing is, once the, the water mains are all replaced, it's things that we can continue to upgrade the system on. But the biggest bite is going to be right off the bat, making sure the lines will take what we're doing with it. And right now, they're so old that if we tried to do any of that, and, and you're adding another, I would love to do it. Matter of fact, I'd love to loop Bradwell and, and do the whole thing at once. But it's cost factor back to you as the resident. And, you know, if we end up with more grant monies on this, we can't, we can't change this because well, all our factors and all our, our preliminary engineering was submitted to those grants as it was.
Right.
But that's projects that we can do moving forward. You wouldn't want to change it in midstream because they could, they could just say, yeah, we're, you're done, you're adding stuff to it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, this, this long-term low rate, that's a fixed rate over the terminal.
That's correct.
Right, now, when you're talking about annual user costs, they're basing it on a certain number of homes, in Scotts Falls.
Correct.
Do you know what that number is?
Actually, it does, it's actually, this number is based on what's called equivalent dwelling units and so basically, an equivalent dwelling unit is a house. And so there, there are 227 single family homes in, in the water district. That includes, you know, old homes as well, because they're considered single family homes. So that's by far the majority of the 295 parcels, but.
Do they see that, I mean, from census, is there any kind of a trend? I mean, is there any growth in the town of Scotts Falls in terms of development, more homes, what would create the cost?
Right, I mean, that's the question, well, how much future development, will there be within the bounds of the district? I mean, it could theoretically be outside and get incorporated and those types of things, but within the bounds.
You could annex the town of Plasberg, right?
Pardon me?
You could annex the town of Plasberg.
Well, there you go. But, but, so, right, the more, you're absolutely correct, though, the more, you know.
More you use, you have the, the more the debt services spread out in annual cost.
So this projection, and I, excuse my ignorance, but I, I mean, I understand that we're built on flat rate for water, at least in Joyce Avenue we are.
Right.
We do have meters.
Yep.
I'm assuming the, the reason those meters were put in is because at some point you're going to, we're going to be charged for.
Meter.
That would be part of this, but once we do this, I can switch over to meters. By first January, I was in office two and a half years ago, I went to Don and I said, how come we're not using the meter, right? And then, once I got into looking at the system and the weaknesses and the strengths of it, we ran into, the biggest problem was like River Street.